First on our agenda is a special presentation is a resolution for Ms. Alicia Roberts. And I'd say it's a, still a sad time because she'll always be missed, but it's something that the city wanted to do just to show our appreciation for all that she's done for those collectively within the city and for me personally. This resolution reads 2014-21 City of Tarpon Springs, Florida. A resolution in the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida noting with deep regret the passing of Alicia Verdel Sands Roberts. Whereas our friend and longtime resident has been called from us to enjoy everlasting, life everlasting. And whereas we are profoundly grieved at the passing of a friend, public servant, a prominent member of the community and a woman who always worked for the best interests of our community. And whereas Alicia Roberts was born on February 7th, 1926 and was the second of four daughters born to John and Freddie Mae Sands and was the great granddaughter of Hanley and Mahalia Jones, who were among the first African-American residents of Tarpon Springs. And whereas Alicia Roberts was actively involved with Tarpon Springs Historical Society and Shepherd Center, served as treasurer for both the North Pinellas Retired Teachers Association and Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church. Served many years as a poll worker for Pinellas County Supervisor of Elections, serving our residents and a member of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority and Eastern Star Organization. And whereas Alicia Roberts attended Florida A&amp;M and Columbia University and became a teacher mentoring children, touching many lives for forty-two years in Pinellas County. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs wishes to remember Alicia Roberts as a remarkable woman of distinction and contributed to society, a mentor of children and role model for future generations, now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida that the Board of Commissioners with profound regret and sorrow extend heartfelt sympathies to the family members, namely her husband of sixty-two years, Charles Roberts Senior, her children, Charles Junior, his wife, Priscilla Karen, husband Johnny, Jackie and Patrick, and numerous grandchildren, great grandchildren, and her sister Bernadine. Be it further resolved this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the City Commission and that a copy be transmitted to the State of Florida Department of Archives and the Tarpon Springs Historical Society. Last, if Roberts want to get it or Charles? We now go to any public comments anyone would like to have on this item? Thank you. We have some other resolutions for those that are in the family that would like to have a copy. Ms. Jacobs will give it to you. But if anybody would like to make a comment, now is the time. You have to go to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Greetings. My and Alicia, that's how I go about it. I would say my and Alicia. She was a caregiver to all of the family members while we were growing up. She made sure that we went to school. She had to pick us up, take us in her car. We all rode together, had hot lunches. She was always there no matter what. I mean with food, clothing, birthday parties, get-togethers, fish fries, everything. Alicia was, she was, and still is, you know, like there. Her spirit lives on in my heart and I know with everybody else that knew her and she touched their lives that she's still there with them as well. A great woman and I can remember so many things, but I remember one time she asked me to read a poem. It was Veterans Day and she always associated herself with different occasions. So her granddaughter was supposed to do it and she couldn't, so I had to get up and I had to do it simply because she asked me to read the poem. There was no ifs, ands, and buts about it. Just do it and do it with pride. So she taught us so many things and I'm so glad she was a part of my life. I'm glad she was my aunt. I'm glad that she accomplished a lot of goals and touched a lot of hearts. And I just say thank you Aunt Alicia and thank you for recognizing her.
I'm Chloe Coney from Tampa and that was my cousin and we are so excited to be here. My mother's coming in. My mother's eighty-eight years old. She was born right here in Topon Springs. Her father was Reverend Hall, isn't that right Cousin Charlie? And with our family and the long history, we are so proud to be here as a family. I'm a woman that wear many hats and I used to work here in Topon Springs, isn't that right Mr. Mayor, with Florida Power? But I currently work for Congresswoman Kathy Castor, my district director. And this family comes from a proud family. She's left a legacy not only in the school system, but touching everybody's heart. And we want to thank you so much for really honoring her and her legacy. So thank you. And you're going to see my mother come in, Mary Mitchell from Tampa, and I had to bring her over here today.
To Mayor Archie and the entire staff of Tarpon Springs and the community, I'm so grateful for the many blessings I have pursued upon my family. She was a beautiful wife. We spent sixty-two beautiful years together and I am so grateful for the many things she obtained and we had a wonderful lovely life. I have no regrets. I wish I could do it again. Thank you very much.
Tell her she don't have to go behind, just take the mic off of there.
To the members and friends of Alicia, you could never have a better friend than her. And she went to California, she called me every day to see if I was doing alright. And she loved the song Blessed Are You Blessed Are You? Jesus is mine, oh what a partake of glory divine. Year of salvation, precious of God, God of the Spirit lost in his love. This is my story, this is my song, praised in my Savior all the day long. This is my story, this is my song, praised in my Savior all the day long. The songs she loved and she sang and she think her mother was coming for her. I don't know what was wrong with her that day. She kept saying, this is my story. And then she'd call her mother's name, but we just became the best friends I've ever had. It's Alicia. She said that she knew that she was a friend of mine and I love her so much. Thank you for being a part of my family and of her family. Thank you very much.
Well, I wouldn't want to miss this good opportunity for anything. Alicia was my cousin. We played together when we were kids and she was a few months older than I was. And when our daddy worked in Slater's, my daddy was the pastor there. And I would always go there and visit and spend two or three days with him. So when we were children, we used to be around each other a lot. See, this is my home. I was born in Topon Springs. My daddy was born in Topon Springs. This is my home and I'm glad y'all doing this for Alicia. It's a wonderful thing. I think this is very nice of y'all and I wouldn't want to miss this for anything. So I had my daughter, I said, somebody got to carry me to Topon Springs. So that's all I can say. She was a good, she was a good cousin because she was very quiet. All the rest wasn't quiet like her, but she was very nice.
I am a student of Mrs. Roberts. First grade, nineteen fifty-five, fifty-six class, Union Academy. And you know what? There are probably many more out in the audience, but as was said earlier, she loved poetry and that was one of the gifts that she gave to all of us. I'd like to recite a poem. House by the side of the road, it's called. It's a Phas poem. There are hermit souls that live withdrawn in the place of their self-content. There are souls like stars that dwell apart in a fellowless permanent. There are pioneer souls that blaze a path where highways never ran. But let me live by the side of the road and be a friend to man. Let me live in a house by the side of the road where the race of men go by. The men who are good, the men who are bad, as good and as bad as I. I would not sit in the scorer's seat or hurl the cynic's band. Let me live in a house by the side of the road and be a friend to man. I see from my house by the side of the road, by the side of the highway of light, the men who are pressed with the adore of hope, the men who are faint with strife. But I turn not away from their smiles, their tears, both parts of an infinite plan. Let me live in a house by the side of the road and be a friend to man. I know there are brook-laden meadows ahead and mountains of weirsome height that the road passes on through the long afternoon and stretches away to the night. And still I rejoice when the travelers rejoice and weep with the people that moan. Nor live in my house by the side of the road like a man who dwells alone. So let me live in my house by the side of the road where the race of men go by. They are good, they are bad, they are weak, they are strong. Wise, foolish, so am I. Then why should I sit in the scorer's seat or hurl the cynic's band? Let me live in my house by the side of the road and be a friend to man. Thank you.
Other comments? Seeing that, I'd just say again is that, you know, we definitely appreciate all of you coming and we appreciate Ms. Alicia and all that she brought to us, like I say, individually and as a community. And her legacy will never die. It lives, it lives within all of us in terms of what she has taught us and how she lived her life. So I thank you for coming and being a part of this. We can take a little short break unless you want to stay around and see how we run this day. Reminds me of my dad's side that the family is very Georgia Southern. You gotta lay you right on time. Okay. Tell my momma to hurry up because you know, I'm conducting a meeting. We're now reconvene, now meeting, and we'll go to public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. Seeing done, we go to Proclamations, Sickle Cell Awareness Month. This proclamation reads, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas the health and welfare of our residents are vital city, are a vital city, state, and nationally concerned. And whereas the hereditary blood disorder known as sickle cell anemia is a serious disease with no known cure, whereas sickle cell mainly affects African-Americans but also appears in other ethnic populations including persons of Greeks, Sicilian, Turkish, Italian, Hispanic, Caucasian, and Eastern individual ancestry. And whereas the Sickle Cell Disease Association of Upper Pinellas, Pasco, and Hernando County aids individuals and families affected by sickle cell disease. And whereas the Florida community has not been made fully aware of this blood disease in its seriousness, whereas the Sickle Cell Disease Association and dedicated volunteers will be participating in activities to make residents aware of this disease, now therefore I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, hereby proclaim September two thousand fourteen as Sickle Cell Awareness Month. And Mr. Henson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. On behalf of the Sickle Cell Disease Association of Upper Pinellas, Pasco, and Hernando County, I gratefully receive this proclamation and I thank you, especially Mr. Mayor, and all that you have done for our organization. We have, you have provided as the executive director at the CAP Center, he has provided space for us rent-free. And me being the only staff available, we can't afford any rent or anything like that. So I just wanted to make sure that we publicly acknowledge you for all you have done. As you mentioned, sickle cell disease is an inherited red blood cell disorder. Healthy red blood cells are round and smooth and soft and it carries oxygen through the blood to every part of the body. Unfortunately, people with sickle cell disease, after the oxygen is released, the blood cell mutates and it becomes, looks like that of a sickle and becomes hard, like a piece of wood. And when that happens, wherever there's blockage, it can cause blockage. Wherever there's blockage, there's pain. It can result in strokes. Wherever there's blockage, there's problems. If it's in the brain, you can have a stroke. If it's in the heart, you can have a heart attack. Different tissue and organ damage. And the education, community education is so important, especially in the African-American community because we seem to be losing this fight. When I first started working several years ago, it was one in four, three hundred African-American had sickle cell disease. Now it's down to one in two hundred. So we're, that's why community education is so important. We'd like to thank you, the City of Tarpon Springs, for acknowledging this lethal disease. And thank you very much and God bless you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? I don't think anyone do. But thank you. Next we go to our consent agenda. Attorney fees, trash, mats, mets, Dano, LLP invoice four six four three seven, Zenzo Law invoice one three six four one, special events Tarpon Springs High School Homecoming Parade, September nineteenth, Labor Day Arts and Craft Show, that's August thirtieth through September first, Fall Arts and Craft Show, October twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, increased file number one three one zero two CCM, SOD Materials and Services, Quo, Pinellas County Contract Number one two three dash zero two dash one six dash BKF, increased bid number one four zero zero five five C, dash CM, HVAC repairs and maintenance, award RFP number one four zero zero seven five P, JJ Liquid Dispersion Type Cationic Polymer, Seventy's Award Beer, bid number one four zero zero eight eight, dash B, dash CM, janitorial and floor cleaning services for various locations. Any items anyone would like to pull?
Just a discussion, Mayor. Or just one thing I'd like to ask. The Fall Arts and Craft Show, is that typically an event that was held downtown and this year is going, is being held in the Sponge Docks or is that a different event I'm thinking of?
No, it's always held on there.
Always in the dock?
Yeah, I think that's a different, I forget what the name.
That's in the November maybe or something?
Yeah, like around Thanksgiving, there's one to downtown. It's called something similar to that.
Yeah, just out of curiosity. Thank you.
Any other public comments on these items? Should we entertain a motion?
Move, approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepanney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Ordinance and resolution, item number eight, ordinance twenty fourteen dash twelve, approve interlocal service boundary agreement with Pinellas County. Second reading.
Ordinance twenty fourteen dash twelve, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida pursuant to Chapter one seventy-one, Part Two. Florida statutes, the Interlocal Service Boundary Agreement Act authorizing an interlocal service boundary agreement between and among the City of Tarpon Springs, Pinellas County, the Cities of Clearwater, Dunedin, Largo, Pinellas Park, Safety Harbor, St. Petersburg, and Seminole, and the Town of Kenneth City, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. It's the second reading of ordinance twenty fourteen dash twelve by title only. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on August eighth, two thousand fourteen.
Any questions or comments on this item? Should we entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepanney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number nine, Resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-three, File Rescue Reorganization.
Resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-three, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida authorizing structural and organizational changes in the Tarpon Springs Fire Rescue Department, including activation of additional existing positions, inactivation of an existing job classification, inactivation of an existing position, approving the recommendation of the City Manager regarding such structural and organizational changes, and providing for an effective date hereof. It's Resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-three by title only.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners, what this final phase of the reorganization is doing is basically changing three of our positions to the lieutenant positions so we can properly staff Fire Station Seventy-One, which does go live October first. And I'll take any questions.
Any other questions, Commissioner Val?
I think maybe that's not even, that's not even more though for Mark, what we discussed yesterday, if you could explain when I asked about, we have enough personnel to cover that one with our existing structure.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have the chief discuss that. The issue that came up that we had talked about to let everybody know with this station and stuff, why, obviously the traditional thing is this is an additional manpower and everything. Explain the whole evolution of this and how your setup is at the station. Explain the whole evolution of this and how your setup is at the station now and what you're doing with moving to another station.
Currently at the public safety facility, which is referred to as Station Sixty-Nine, we're running two ALS vehicles. The ALS engine is required to have a minimum of three, three personnel on it. You have an officer, a driver, and a paramedic, at least one paramedic. And you do have to have an officer, which in this case is a lieutenant or a line supervisor at each station. We have been running the one lieutenant out of this public safety facility, Station Sixty-Nine, up until, you know, until we can move out to Seventy-One. Once we move to Seventy-One, we're simply taking one of our ALS units, which currently runs from Station Sixty-Nine with the same staffing, the same number of people, and placing it out to Station Seventy-One, which also causes the fact that we need to make, to have another line supervisor, which is the lieutenant. So we're not changing the number of people. We have the number of people in place as required by our agreements with Pinellas County EMS and Pinellas County Fire Protection Services. You're required to have three people. And if you go up and down, it would be nice to have four or five. I can fit six on an engine, believe me. I would be happy to put six people on a fire engine. If you folks will fund it, I'll do it. I promise you. But I will tell you that the, our contracts require that we have three properly trained, properly licensed people on each unit. We have the right people. This is the last move to promote three more lieutenants, which would give us one more lieutenant for each shift, A, B, and C. And we would be properly balanced throughout the three stations with the right number of officers, drivers, and paramedics. We do already have an eligibility list for the promotions for lieutenants. And it's just a matter of going through the formality, making sure that we're, that you folks are good with it.
And again, the difference, let them know the difference that you have with two stations operating on one and then geographically moving, and what that does in the county study on response time. And why we're doing this temporary station before our regular ones get built.
Right. The need, the need for Fire Station Seventy-One has been there for decades. It's, it's done by geography. The, we have the Anclot River, which obviously cuts right through town, separating north and south. That just leaves the two bridges to get north and south. Currently, by running the two units out of the same station, we have one of our ALS units, which is designated to run to the north side of town. All we're doing is we're putting them closer to their immediate response area by having them on the north side of town. We have today, as we sit today, if we had a call out on Anclot Boulevard, off Anclot Boulevard, you're looking twelve-minute response. We're required by contract to add, to go no more than seven minutes and thirty seconds ninety percent of the time for an EMS call. We can't do that right now. Throughout the past several years with Pinellas County EMS, there, there's been several studies, as we all know. And some of them were really thorough and some of them were, you know, put together. But it, it doesn't matter who did what study. Every single study came out with the fact that we needed to add that station on the north end of town for, for the response time issue. We already have the personnel in place. Pinellas County EMS has actually stepped up and they will fund a medic for each shift, A, B, C. So they're going to fund three more people as long as that station is up and running on October first. Which also leads us to why we're going to run in a temporary facility starting October one, which is close to being completed and ready to go. We, we will start collecting our funding from the Pinellas County EMS on October one, once we go live out there. And the immediate impact will be to the residents, to the visitors, to the, there's plenty of construction going on up there. This is on the RO site, on the RO property is where the station is. The way we're set up, our temporary facility is tucked off into the corner of that property to stay out of the way of the construction for the RO plant. Once the RO plant is completed, all of their trailers, their office trailers and whatnot are on the exact location where our building is going to go. Once the RO plant is finished, they'll take their trailers off and we can start building our permanent station and we'll move from the temporary into the permanent facility.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So I understand that, of course, importance of this new station. Station Sixty-Nine is probably your busiest station. Is that correct? And how will it be affected by reducing your staff in half in that station and moving them to the Seventy-One?
We're not really, it, yes, there's going to be less people staying there, eating there, but we're not reducing the response staff to that immediate Station Sixty-Nine area. We have Engine Sixty-Nine, which is designated to run the Station Sixty-Nine coverage area. That won't change at all. That engine is still going to run that same coverage area. We're going to take the engine that's right now sitting in that building and running to the north end of town. That, that engine will only run as a backup if the other one's tied up. So there is a redundancy. If one unit is busy, the entire county is set up to where if there's a unit busy, another call comes in that same area, it brings the next closest unit. Whether it's Seventy-One, or Seventy, or Sixty-Eight, or what have you.
Yeah, so you'll just get help from the other units.
Yeah, and, but it's not going to, there's no impact.
I'm just thinking you're reducing your staff by...
We're not reducing our staff.
No, I mean to go to Seventy-One?
No, we're not reducing the staff at all. We're, we're taking one unit with the same number of people and putting it in Station Seventy-One.
Right.
There's three less people going to be at Station Sixty-Nine.
That's what I meant.
But there's still going to be the, the people that Station Sixty-Nine, that were and will continue to respond in Station Sixty-Nine's area.
Okay.
So there shouldn't be any impact at all in the Station Sixty-Nine area. The guys will be a little, you know, the card table will be a little less crowded, maybe. That's, that's pretty much it. There shouldn't be any impact at all in this area for the response time.
And there's a possibility you can get some help from the county with the paramedics, as you mentioned, after October first, or did I hear that wrong?
Oh, that, that's, it's part of the EMS funding contract. It's not, they're not going to add people or add staffing to us, no.
Okay.
It's, it's a funding issue.
Okay. Thank you.
There no other questions? Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any other public comments on this item? Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarrpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next is miscellaneous, item number ten, budget update if needed.
Yes, as I said, that I would put on this meeting and the next regular session, an item to discuss anything budget-wise. Really from our end, nothing has really changed, except the only real change is that, that so far, that fifty-four thousand dollars from the nursing home running. Right now, I've got dedicated towards the, the different incentive projects that Ms. Lemon has talked about, the docs. The, you know, docs facade grant, which she's working back, she's handed, I haven't had a chance to look at it today, but she gave me an outline that I'll be bringing back to you in future time. So for, for docs, for the restaurant possibilities that she talked about. And for if the CRA money runs out, the ability to do that, there'll be three, three grand money, that money right now, which again, you can change, but right now I've designated that money towards those grants she was talking about. And we'll be coming back at future meetings and, and you'll see her ideas on these and how they're administered and stuff. But obviously it's money that you can move from the budget, but as a placeholder and from the, you know, the last budget meeting we have, I've got that money right now dedicated towards that. So if there's anything tonight that anybody wants to research, or if there's a staff member from a department you want me to bring to the second for the budget item, whether it be tonight or anytime between night, tonight and the September second meeting, let me know for any other clarifications on the budget. Obviously, as I said, the second, that's where we'll get into talking about the salary portion and that I'll be all bringing to you on the second. So along with all the salary information and stuff, we can discuss any other items, budget-wise questions, just give me a heads up of who you want here, what questions you have to answer. And we'll budget that and put it on the, the end of the next meeting as we prepare for the two public hearings in September.
Just one thing for clarification for me is that, do we have in this budget, within the CIP, anything about the Marina bathrooms?
Yes, that's the, that's that Marine, the hundred and thirty-five thousand we have for Marina updates of the, the docs, the bathrooms and all that. That is in this year, beginning October one's CIP for that year.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner Ban?
Yes, Mark, would, would, would the number change at all, the, for the deficit affected by overtime? You were discussing, you weren't sure the number would go up. Like right now, we were in, I think, the five hundred thousand range, give or take. Will you have a better grasp on that number by the next meeting? Any more information or input from the overtime that, from police and fire?
Maybe, but again, that's just one factor. Some of the other numbers come in good if the other, if there's no needs to spend budget money for middle of August to September. If that money's not spent, that's going to go to the good side. So what that told them, I'll probably know how much I'm, I'm down overtime-wise, but I won't know what's not spent in the budget. We probably not going to get that until October afterwards. And again, I'm not going to wait on it. We're going to do major updates and stuff, but as soon as I have that information, that information is going to be brought, those numbers in that floating chart, I'm going to keep bringing back to you, whether it's August, November, December. If we get that final number, soon as we get that final number, all the figures will be brought back towards, so you see where we are, because obviously one column affects another column and affects what we might want to do, so. I'm hoping we're going to have some savings in some expenditures and not expending that's going to try to keep it to the, to the projection numbers and stuff to offset the overtime. Because we already know the overtime's there, but hopefully there's some things we don't have to do that's going to, you know, keep that from, from raising that number.
And we can have a line item for, for the, for the website. We, I mentioned that last time, you were looking at some advertising dollars or something over, and so it's in the budget actually for the website?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Yeah, not yet.
But it will be...
We can do, that's one of the things.
As long as it's done by passage, that's all I care about, but just so we, it is, it is actually itemized, so it actually, hopefully will happen.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any public comments on this item?
Pier de Lac is five one four Ashland Avenue. I must admit, I haven't looked at the budget and can't comment on other than what I read in the paper. And I know we don't get a lot of paper coverage up here anymore, but I was concerned about one item that I read. I think it was in the Sun Coast News where they were talking about how you were wanting to use the funds from the sale of the nursing home. And I just heard a little blurb, something fifty-four thousand from the nursing home sale going to some grants and... It's easy to start whittling a little here off of that eight hundred thousand. I don't know how much we actually got after costs, but you know, you whittle a twenty here, a fifty there, a thirty-five here, a forty-five there. Just want to remind you that what previous board's intent was on monies earned from the sale of properties and solid fixed assets. When we passed the sale ordinance years ago, we had a big discussion about, does that money go into general fund? Does it go into a separate fund? How much can be cut up off of it? Since then, we've passed the land preservation ordinance. My only thing I would say at this point is those monies earned from the sale of a property of an asset should be put back into an asset for the Tarpon Springs community and its citizens and residents for future. Whether it's capital expenditures for playgrounds or purchasing other properties adjacent to properties we have, maybe to expand those opportunities that we're trying to do to keep this community as unique and flavorful as it is. But I caution you about taking a little here off and a little there off for operating expenses. Don't be afraid of the deficit in the reserves. We've been dealing with that every year, year after year after year. And somehow Tarpon Springs always comes up on the good side. We have, in fact, what's the reserve number? About almost eight million? Am I correct? When, we were on the board, that's where it was around then, between seven to ten, same thing. So you're doing good things operationally, so don't be afraid to use that reserve for a cushion, because if you manage it properly, you'll, you'll just keep transferring that cushion. But when you're selling capital assets and getting a solid dollar in return, please look at making sure you put those in assets or facilities or things that will be a betterment to the City of Tarpon Springs and the community, not wasting assets or operational costs. Thank you.
If there are no other comments, commission comments, then we will conclude this agenda. Chief?
No comments, Mayor.
Mr. Attorney?
No comments.
City Manager?
Nothing other than the mayor had the best bow ties at the Florida League of Cities, which was full of people with bow ties. I think the mayor had the most colorful, the most exotic, and was even wearing the President's Association's necktie and caught attention. So I want to congratulate you for that and representing the city well. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Clerk? Commissioner Banther?
No comments.
Vice Mayor?
No comments.
Commissioner Tarrpenny?
No thanks.
Commissioner Seber?
All good.
Well, hey, listen, my mother sung and my niece's danced, so maybe it's time for us to adjourn at seven sixteen.
Seven fifteen.
One minute.
One minute.
Seven sixteen.
We haven't done that in a while.
Hey, that might be...
I'm still making up for that one meeting. Why I'm making this, man, I'm still, Mr. Ban, there's still time for me to make up for that meeting.
Stop watch.
I thought you went all around.
Thank you, you too.
Yes, we, I was there when the mayor was there. That's why I told the mayor, why did Karen Lemon, did Karen Lemon send you up there to do that and stuff? Because the mayor, when I was going to find their booth, when I... Yeah. Oh, good, okay. Oh, did he? Yeah. So the mayor, I go up to him and the bucks and guy tells him, what the heck, did Karen Lemon send you here too and stuff and doing stuff?